This is eighteen. This is eighteen.
Good morning, sir.
It's corresponding with your lovely wife last night.
Yeah. We got a move meeting on it. Don't let anybody talk too much.
Okay, yes, sir.
They deceased the bug.
Well, we can move it along the loop then.
Move what along?
May.
Oh, I said we're.
Where are we?
We're on.
I mean, assume we're on the zoom. No, I wasn't telling you to move it along, G.
Well, Ben was.
Oh.
No big luck.
You just walked in the door.
Didn't you notice?
I did notice.
Geez, I hardly got out of the parking lot. That's why I don't come down to town. Everybody wants to chat with me.
Oh, I see.
I see. And today is the thirtieth of May and at ten oh two, I will open this, this meeting. I can see it's gonna be good.
Sorry, he told you it was gonna be wild.
So, um, do we have, we have one public welcome Phil?
I think Rich is here somewhere.
And Rich is here, yes. He's almost become a member.
He says his wife won't let him.
Oh, she's a smart woman.
And we have, I haven't come on yet. We have Jan.
Okay.
And we have James Graham.
Okay, oh, we know why they're on. Um, and we have Phil and Rich. Okay, so, do either Phil or Rich have any public comments at this point?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
There's just been money put back from this, uh, federal grants into the state program to study workforce housing and zoning. And I don't know if the board is aware of that or that's something that, you know, could get information about and take a look at, but, um, there's something like twenty-nine million dollars just put back into the state coffers for that. And it's the kind of thing that requires coordination, you know?
Yeah.
There's a planning board and, um, it's not something that a small group can do. The town has to sort of be behind it, but.
Yes, probably the upper valley lakes on the regional planning. Um, but we can certainly reach out and see federal grants.
And I'll shoot, I downloaded the information. I'll shoot it to Gina.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
I did have a comment. I know you're gonna talk about the, uh, the Lime Foundation application to use the comment. Maybe from that could come an outline or guidelines about how the normal way to use the comment is. And that would say, yes, if you do these things and this is how you park and this is what you do, you then have a document to show other groups and say, so, these are the rules. Uh, if you say, yeah, 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 that's fine, you don't have to track Sean down and talk to Sean about a parking plan. You don't have to do any of this stuff. It's just, oh, oh, that's all you wanna do? I mean, or if what you wanna do fits in these rules, you're all set. So, that's something to think about as, as we go forward because.
We have spent many meetings trying to refine the information that goes out to people, trying to refine the guidelines for you need to provide the following and da-da-da.
Right. Maybe that's, maybe that's in hand and I've just never seen it. So, that, it is.
It is helpful if people read that stuff and fill out the applications following the guidelines. I agree with you.
Perfect, okay.
But we have kind of done that.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, the only thing it doesn't have in there is if they end up saying that the one-way and some parking on the backside is the way to go, then we can add that?
We can add that and change it. We're talking about that.
Having that as just one package.
Yep.
That would be helpful. Thank you. That's all I need.
We do have a package presently, doesn't mean it can't be made better.
Perfect.
Um, I'm gonna cha, I'm gonna jump to near to the end of the agenda.
Can we have any public comments from Zoom things?
We had Jan, Jan and James. I'm presuming you guys are here for the CPCNH conversation?
Yes, that's, that's why I came. Thanks.
Okay. Jan, do you have something different?
I was, I was here, actually, I wanted to bring up the same issue that Phil brought up, um, which is about the state grants. Uh, and I, um, just wanna point out that it doesn't look like they're being made, it looks like they're being granted to towns rather than regional entities.
Okay.
So, um, just wanna highlight that.
Okay.
Might be some, a, a great thing for some work that we really need to have done with updating some of the zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Then, now we will jump to the end of the agenda. We have a demerger request. I am going to push this off to our next meeting. I understand in our packet today we have additional information that we didn't have earlier. And I will also say that I will come in and sit down with David and the, as many materials going back as far as we can find them to try and figure out whether or not this request qualifies under the state law about demergering. So, we can take that off this time's agenda. Hopefully see it either at the next meeting or the meeting after. Okay?
Just to be clear, that's Dave Robbins?
Yes. Do you want one of them to sit down with me and look at all the maps? So, we're, yes, that's our planning and zoning administrator. All right. Then, since we have, as you guys know, I love to move things around. Uh, Community Power Coalition. We have heard, I believe, from our attorney who has talked with the CPCNH folks. We've heard from Primax. Are we, um, comfortable going forward with this?
I am.
You are?
Joe Driscoll had a bunch of, had a number of open questions that he had on reading the agreement that hadn't been answered. He now has reached out to folks at CPCNH and gotten answers to those questions. I, I emailed him after. He got those answers and just got him to confirm for us that, uh, he feels that the town's line is not being treated unfairly or any differently than any other participant in the, in the arrangement and that none of the, none of the things that he saw in the agreement or that he had questions about operate to the specific detriment of law. Um, so he, you know, based on that, I think I'm comfortable going forward signing the agreement.
Okay. David, okay.
Yeah, I'm fine.
You're fine with that? Well, I will make a motion that we go forward and sign the agreement and move it along.
Second.
Thank you. All those in.
Ben, I.
Judy, I. Um, James Graham, did you want to have any comment at this point?
Uh, I wanted to say thank you and I appreciate you guys, uh, you know, uh, paying attention to this and moving it along and, you know, there's gonna be more coming.
Oh, God.
Just, I would just say, you know, I think there's a, uh, we, we have to kind of work out a structure of how, you know, we're gonna manage this on our end.
That is right.
You know? Yeah.
Yeah, James, um, what is the, uh, I know that there was, now CPCNH has to consider all of these towns that have asked to opt in. And do you have any kind of a sense about what the timeline is likely to be on this process going forward?
I think they're, they're talking about the next, um, uh, you know, onboarding or whatever, it has been in September or October. As, you know, when, when we'll actually come online. Um, and between now and then, my understanding is that they'll, uh, they'll have, uh, information that's gonna go out to customers explaining, you know, everything that's, that's gonna happen in terms of how they can opt out. And of course, what the rates will be. So, um, I'll be in touch with, uh, Andrew Hatch and, uh, you know, just to keep facilitating this going forward.
Thank you very much. Anything further?
No.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, James.
So, we will be.
There's one signature line.
Okay.
So, you guys should be there move for you or just squish your names in.
Okay.
I'll move that.
Judy's not.
We have Judy's sign on behalf of this like board.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay.
She should be assigned.
You have to watch these two. They do that a lot. All right.
Yeah, but she, she writes five names down. She signs, so she effectively signs her all.
All right, you guys, you must be channeling my brother. He used to give me all kinds of grief. All right, going back and starting over, we have minutes from May sixteenth and May twentieth.
I'll move it. Gina, you got that one comment? Was that certainly?
Sent it out to them, yeah.
That was real.
Yeah.
I, I think that was accurate, right? It wasn't. The, the change I made, it was inaccurate, an inaccurate description before that.
I didn't see the change you made. I just sent it to them because I didn't have time to look at it, but it, was it the highlighted area?
I think it was the highlighted area.
Yes, I did see that. That wasn't accurate. Takeaway.
Yep.
Yes. I don't even know how that got in there.
I don't, I don't either. And that's why I highlighted it because I didn't remember that conversation.
It wasn't.
It didn't apply. So, I'll second for the minutes. All those in favors, I.
Ben, I.
Judy, I. And that's two sets of minutes from the sixteenth and the twentieth. Boy, we've been busy, guys. Okay, and we have a manifest. And it came early enough, I actually got to look at it. Yeah, thank you. And it is in the amount of, it looks like it is forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and twelve whole cents.
That's exactly correct.
Forty-four, two, six, six.
One line there about fire truck repair. What, was that on the new fire truck?
Fire truck repair.
I thought it was a fire truck.
It was a big amount for the highway truck repair.
Oh, I saw that, but I thought it was a fire truck.
Highway.
We had a couple of things.
Please, highway. I didn't catch that. I thought truck services, highway. And that's it.
Yeah, I was, I'm reading it on my iPhone.
Well, there you go.
Gina, you know, I had a couple of questions about that. It turned out to be overseer of the public welfare. Is there any way when reviewing the manifest for me to identify those kind of things in advance or is it just every time one of those comes up, we just pay whoever the, that particular specific vendor is in that case?
Well, you guys don't have a choice. You can't say no.
No, I know, but I just wanna be able to know it. I mean, you know, you see a payment to something that looks odd, that doesn't have anything to do with normal town business. And so, it's natural to question that. I'm wondering if there's a way when I'm looking at the manifest for me to know that that's what those kind of things are or no.
Um, not on the manifest. Now, if I send you the original, the document I used to send you to, it shows what account number it goes to.
Yeah.
And you would know.
But that's all right. So, I'll just ask when I see something.
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't see.
There was one page that, uh, feeling like a hard night to, um, practice on the Connecticut.
Yeah, there was something on Home on the Connecticut. There was another for, there were a couple of payments to the Skolma Bank or something that sort of didn't.
Those are overseer of the welfare.
It was on page six, I think.
Wow.
Boy, we're doing two for the job of you ladies. I move.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, David. All those in favors, say aye.
Ben, I.
David, all right.
And Judy, I.
Thank you for the questions, though. I like that. I mean, you're lucky.
Now, I, I read every, we, see where the money's going.
Yeah.
It's all goes to the school.
Yeah, it's mostly.
Oh, and let me, um, before the end of the day, I had Cox email with Catherine Greenlink about a couple of issues.
Okay.
Including the trees going into the town line, so.
Oh, good. Okay, so we'll add that to the end. Ben?
Now, Gina, do you know what happened on that, uh, that one residence where they didn't wanna allow, where they weren't responsive to?
That's it.
He's gonna update us.
We know. You, you don't know where it was?
Yeah, I know what's going on. So, I'll, I'll send it to everybody online.
Okay. Thank you. So, we have received a copy of the petition. I believe it's coming from the Friends of Post Pond. I believe it's going to the state, so I'm not sure that we need to take any action.
You're just getting it because you're a property abutter.
And it's about.
The abutting is the pond itself. We own shoreline.
You own land, right. That abuts that.
Yeah, that's true.
The state kinda has to handle it because pond is a state, it's a great pond.
I was reading this morning that there's legislative developments going on with respect to that question about wakeboarding and what the distance is and.
That's what this level has to do with.
So, what, what is it exactly that, uh, that's being petitioned here? What do they want?
They don't want water skiing.
Wakeboarding, right? I know, I know, but it's not just that. It, it's.
It's a no way.
It's not a fly-out prohibition. It's a question of how far from the shoreline you allow that sort of activity.
And if pond's smaller than, you don't allow.
Yeah, yeah, well, exactly. So, but do you know what in particular Mayor Sue McKenzie's group is petitioning for? Do they want like a five-hundred-foot barrier or three-hundred?
This whole big petition that is part of that.
That's going to the state.
They don't have, right. Right.
Yeah. So, um, I know in the past, a few years ago, people were concerned because someone was water skiing on the pond and it created big waves and that's hard for any nesting loons or other nesting things, but.
Have them to be, somebody have fun out there.
It's a different.
Put them in jail.
That's just how some people feel, David.
Anyway.
A lot more that went on in the past.
Yeah.
Even with one of them.
So, anyway, I don't know. They, this just says, this letter is to inform you, it's going to us of their intent, Friends of Post Pond, to petition the state.
It doesn't say what they're petitioning the state for.
But it will be filed by tomorrow. And, um, it's proposing to restrict a body of water which is postpond.
Oh, I have one other thing.
That you guys don't have to vote on or anything.
Right.
Well, I remember I, I spoke to, oh crap, I always forget his name. James, son-in-law.
Rob.
Rob.
Meyer.
About going out and looking at riverbanks again. Uh, he said we could use one of the, he has two pontoon boats. We could use one of them anytime we wanted. If somebody could navigate.
I can drive a boat.
I know you can.
I have my boating license.
I have a boating license.
You do? Good.
I'm sure I wanna drive the boat.
I have a boat in the river.
I could do that.
Well, either way, but yeah, we need to take multiple people, but so.
Great.
So.
And Phil is just the one here.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, shooting there.
What was his name? He'd take us out.
Oh, yes.
Wayne.
Wayne Bates.
Wayne Bates.
Take us out.
Yeah.
Unfortunately passed away.
Yep.
But we, we're, we're overdoing looking at those places.
Yes, you are.
Okay, so we need to schedule that up.
Or it being a select.
So, do you have a pontoon boat?
Get a boat, right.
Do you have a pontoon boat?
Yeah.
Where are you located on that?
Well, about a mile and a half south of the bridge that's never gonna get fixed. Used to be Sylvia Reed's house, more exactly north of the one that's gonna drive my taxes up ferociously, the two, six, seven, two million seven house or something.
Which house is it?
These down there.
One sixty-one.
Hanover, just in.
Down on the south end.
South end.
Yeah.
I don't know which one's closer. Uh, there's some up on the north, North, the North River Road. There's a steep bank and then there's the.
That's the way we went.
Some of that North Eppert Road or all that.
Right.
And then you could relook it.
Yep.
But we would take care of this problem and take care of, but it's still a little bit unfortunate.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sounds like a plan.
So, one or the other. We gotta, we gotta do that.
Thank you, Phil.
Welcome.
Okay, we have a tax anticipation note in the amount of three-point-eight million dollars at a whopping six-point-four-five percent interest.
Well, they're not gonna pay the interest directly.
Um, we only pay for what we use, which is nice. And the tax anticipation note, for anyone that doesn't know, is, um, because we only collect taxes once a year.
We give it a.
We get to mid to late summer and the funds are pretty sketchy. They're getting low and we borrow what we need to make it through till we get our next taxes. For anyone that's interested, some of us think we should do taxes twice a year, which would alleviate some of this problem. It does make more work and costs a little more. But I think in terms of running the town and in terms of individuals being able to budget, it could be helpful, but.
You know what would be nice to see in thinking about that question is a, a chart that shows what we've actually paid in tax anticipation note interest over the last three or four years? You know, it.
That's easy for me to do.
If it's, you know, six, seven hundred dollars a year, sort of, who cares?
Absolutely not.
If it's fifteen, fifteen, twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year, then that's more real, I don't know.
Yeah. It used to be less than ten thousand. Now it's over twenty, so.
And is that attributable to increased borrowing or increased interest rate or what?
Both. But it's mostly contributed to the fact that we've had to borrow more, um, earlier because we don't, even if you borrow like three-point-eight, it's not based on that whole amount. If I use or if we use a million of it between now and July, that's the only thing we get taxed on. So, I mean, the interest, I mean, tax. My brain's just going, it's taxed. So, it's, you know, it's not, it's not on the margin.
I move it.
Thank you, Ben. I was about to say, just, do you wanna second that?
Lots of places to second.
Yes, Rich.
Would you say the numbers again? Three-point-six million at what percentage?
Three-point-eight million.
Hey.
At six-point-four-five percent.
Well, but that's not right. I'm, well, it's right, but it's not accurate.
That's the entry.
That's the amount that we would be entitled to borrow, but we don't necessarily draw that. I understand completely. Thank you.
Yeah, last year we borrowed six-point, I, six, three-point-five and we used just barely over three million.
Okay.
But this year we have more road stuff, so.
Yeah, compared to the two-point-six of the school is borrowing for thirty years. It's chicken.
Okay. And so, all those in favor of the tan, say aye.
Ben, aye.
You know.
Judy, aye. That is approved.
Are we supposed to initial this page, Gina?
We're supposed to initial wherever it's marked in orange, yes, sir. Where there's changes. You can do that after if you want, if it's too.
Okay.
So, you have to make changes to it.
All right. Thank you. Now comes the fun stuff. CCL leases is a tenant of the Town of Lime at the Academy Building. Um, okay, I have notes. They pay four-thousand-eight-hundred dollars a year.
Four-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Sorry, I put that in that row. Okay, I'm sorry. Now that I'm looking at the lease.
And, well, then my numbers are gonna be all wrong.
Oh, no.
They have not had an increase since they began using the Academy Building. And, um, I would suggest either a three percent increase or an eight percent increase since they've never had one. The three percent increase, based on the number I had, would have been a hundred and forty-four dollars. The eight percent would be an additional three-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. They should have an increase. They are using the building more and more.
Well, can you tell me what these guys?
CCL?
Yeah.
Is the community care line. And they have office hours, they have what keys, but they also have a lot of outreach.
Well, but they're doing nonprofit stuff, right? They're helping lime residents.
Yes.
They're, they're a nonprofit.
In some ways you might say, you don't need to be charging these guys full market rent maybe because.
Well, I don't think that's a full market rent, but.
Forty, forty-six hundred for the whole year?
Yeah.
That's a steal.
Not a month. But it's some, yeah, so you would, you would advocate to leave it at forty-six?
I don't feel strongly, but it, it seems to be that if what they're doing is sort of to the benefit of the town anyways, it's funny to be charging them more money.
I, I think it was based on, um, the expenses to operate it while they were there, so.
Oh, okay. So, we're not going out of pocket to.
Break even.
Yeah.
And that's what I went, oh, shoot about because I forgot to look that up.
Yeah.
Why don't we do that again? Why don't we have Gina?
Look that up again.
Yeah, so that we're, we're kinda breaking even and.
Okay. Phil?
Just wanted to mention, it's a five-oh-one-C-three, but it's a five-oh-one-C-three and then over two-hundred thousand dollar a year budget. So, it's not like, um, a couple hundred bucks is likely break up.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, one thing I noticed about these leases, when I was looking at the residential lease that we have, there is a provision there that I kind of like in section eight, the use of premises. Where it says the premises are to be used exclusively for blah blah blah. Tenants shall not do or permit anything to be done on the leased premises that will any, in any way interfere with the rights of other tenants, occupants or neighbors or to injure or annoy such persons. Tenants shall not allow the premises to be used for any improper, unlawful or objectionable purpose. I really liked that language.
Yep.[1643.96]
And then when I was looking at this Lime Tender Academy, now I, I realize that the CCL is unlikely to be doing any of those things, but I still think it's maybe a good idea to have a provision like that in the lease that says, you know, you won't be in here smoking crack or something.
Or bugging the neighbors or, you know.
Yeah, yeah. I think we could probably add that. So it looks like we're not ready to...
I'll do it next time.
Well, you can, you, you can decide you're doing these. I can add in the things.
Yeah, but we also wanted some more information on the, on the CCL. We wanted to see what the costs were.
Yeah, to set the rent on, we need to know what the...
At least, at least the, um, the Pike House one, you could, you could say, yes, and...
Okay, we're doing, that's coming up next, Dina. That's okay.
Keep her out of that. So, you know, it's on my brain.
Yeah, yes, I like that, that phraseology as well, and it, uh, some year might come in handy. Um, okay, so CCL, we're going to get more information, and we're going to do that next meeting. And then, since we're right here, we've got the, um, the rental lease agreement between Lime and our tenant, Pike House, which is the little antique house right over here. And we agreed that we were going to raise that rent. And I think that we decided that that had not been raised, and it was quite less than market rate. So I believe this is now one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents a month.
And that reflects the raise we, the increase.
A hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents increase, which was ten percent.
Ten percent, which we asked.
Because it hadn't been raised in two years.
In two years, you had seventeen percent inflation since June.
Yep.
Yep.
So are we in accord with the CCL lease and ready to sign that and move forward?
I'll move it.
One second.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Ben. All those in favor say aye.
David, aye.
Ben, aye.
And Judy, aye. Okay, that's approved. And you caught the date changes, which I had seen before.
Did, I hope.
And it was another place. Okay, and the term now, okay, so the term is twelve months commencing July one. This is item two, and terminating on June thirty. So if you want to go up to that heading and change that to, instead of May one, July one.
Same, that's the name, change it, okay. Yeah, that's not on your signature page though, so...
And ending on June thirty, which we had negotiated with her because she has a child in school.
Right.
Yes, sir, sorry.
Would you say the, uh, the, either the, the rent, the monthly rent, the new rent for the Pike House, please?
The new rent is one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents a month.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And I believe these leases are public, so if someone wanted to see all the details, they could. And the increase is a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents a month for anyone that's interested. Well, come on, come on, man. Do you want a piece of paper? All right, yeah, just, thank you. CCL, Pike House, that's next. Lime Foundation. Oh, first I'm going to pop to this, the State of Vermont withholding changes for the Vermont Child Care Contribution. The town has two employees who live in Vermont. I read a bazillion things online, took me like four hours. I did not have a good day on Tuesday. I sat at my computer all day long. And this morning I was able to reach out to the helpline for the Department of Taxes, and I talked to a very nice lady, and I was as jovial as I could be, and said, "This is a very small town in New Hampshire. We have two Vermont employees working here. Really? Does Lime need to contribute to the CCC tax by withholding from their wages or by the town paying this?" And she said, "Oh, no, you are not subject to that."
Well, pat you on the back for that one.
This was a lady named...
Get it right.
Not subject to the tax.
And, but, no, but who?
And we don't have to do...
No, I got the message, but, but, but who was giving it?
A lady that worked at the Vermont Department of Taxes.
All right, so...
The Taxpayer Services, and you go to the Tax Types Number Three, and then you go to Number One.
It's funny that you got that answer, because that was my, I was like...
We're all thinking that.
I, I was thinking, why would we be subject to this? We're not in Vermont. That's not, it shouldn't be our problem. Is it just our, our withholding service?
Our payroll, they sent it to us, telling us we were...
Payroll Service wants to do this, because they're used to the...
Well, no, the State of Vermont sent us this form saying, "You have to do this."
Right.
I asked our payroll. They said, "Yes, you have to do this." So I hope this lady she talked to is correct.
Well, we'll find out.
As far as we're concerned, they override all of our comments.
Get it in writing like Phil said.
Okay, I will...
Well, I mean, that is the case, that we get oral advice from these services generally, legally entitled to rely on.
Yeah, well, I can follow up if you would like.
There's an email address. I can shoot him an email.
Just follow up the email.
There's an email address right here.
Okay, okay. That'd be great. Dina will follow up.
The email should say something like, "We spoke to..."
Mary.
"We spoke to Mary, and you're da-da-da-da, and she advised us that it's a small town in the state. Andrew, we're not liable for this tax. Can you please confirm that advice is correct?"
Yeah, I mean...
I can do that.
It seemed to me, yeah, we could withhold, but what the information that we got said was that we have to pay a percentage of the withholding, the town.
Right.
And I'm thinking, really? You know, when somebody has their wages garnered, the town doesn't contribute to that, so it...
I even asked our payroll company, "What are all your other, what are all your other towns doing?" They said, "They're paying, they're paying the forty, point forty-four," and I'm like, okay. So I'll have to call on them and say, "Wait, you better check this out."
Yep, okay, well, all right. Ongoing to be continued.
My turn.
Thank you. Well, it made me really, really ugly. I've got my, my independent hat on, you know, my libertarian bent came out.
Well, your employees, the two Vermont employees aren't real thrilled either, are they?
No, I bet not. So Lime Foundation uses the common. Is this, we've got, mostly Jordan and Dina look at these applications, and they see, you know, that Sean has looked at the parking and that the use is appropriate. And in this case, there's a lot of activity being proposed, and so they thought that maybe the board should look at the application and see how we felt and if it meant, that it, if it met the management and use policy, so...
Uh, I think Jordan and I, you know, questions really involved around, um, yes, they're putting this on for the community, which is a great thing, but because they're going to have things being sold there, like food, you know, and one of the things is you're not supposed to have commercial things, and, and commercial entities are not supposed to be making money. So you guys would need to make a special exception for this. Um, and the amount of people, you know, we all, we also thought, well, it's really way bigger than just the norm little event. So I know that, that Mr. Cafrey has met with Sean already, and Sean seems to be okay with their plan.
Lime Town has survived bigger events than that.
Yeah, totally.
And rowdy events.
We just don't want it, we don't, I, I don't think it's a fair place to put Jordan and I to say yes to something of this magnitude.
No, it's fine for, no, it's like...
Of this magnitude, right.
But, I mean, the, the Lime Town, and over the years, it's been used for Lime Fair. Lime Fair was rowdy drinking.
Rowdy, lots of people driving all over the...
Yeah, the girly shows all line there.
Girly shows.
Girly shows.
Can we get that back? Reinstituted?
I remember all those things, Bears Wheels and...
Beer tents.
Oh, they used to do that in all the towns around here.
Of course, they did.
Lebanon used to have a huge big fair on their common.
It's called liability insurance now.
I know, it's too bad.
Biggest problem was those, what do they call the people that fix all the rides?
Yes.
They were beat...
Roustabouts.
Well, they, they stole batteries all over town, people's cars, got new batteries to replace the old batteries on their equipment.
All right, I'll, I'll move that we approve this.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, and David, thank you, and Ben, thank you, and all those in favor?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
And Judy, aye, and I would just like to make a comment that I'm really tickled to see this kind of use. Let's hope it goes off without a hitch. And we did talk, and I'm not sure that Sean has decided yet, about a one-day closure of the road at the back of the common.
I think we should do that.
And do one lane with traffic, the other lane.
We should just do it.
Park the food trucks, park the vendor cars.
I agree with Ben that that seems like a good idea to me, but I would say I would defer to Sean and let him decide.
Well, I think he wants to.
Oh, if he wants to do it, then I...
I know, I get that question about his, he promoted it, so...
That's the plan for, for this event. That's correct. It's like a trial.
Yep, great.
No, I don't think I misread Sean over the years.
No, but, but he also, uh, there was, there's a little glitch with the state.
Yeah, we have to...
And that's what's holding us up.
One sec.
It's in New Hampshire.
I felt they turned everything over to...
They did, but where, but where our road now comes out onto their road, and what direction, and, you know, there's all that stuff.
Sean will take care of it. That would be, that would be really, really great for...
Well, it's gonna happen one day. The state won't even know that.
No, 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 this, no, it's not that, Ben. He's being a real smarty, smarty today. It's not this one event. It's making it a one-way and all that stuff.
Yeah, for the one event, I think he said he could easily do it, and considering maybe going forward with it.
Yes.
Okay.
Trying it out.
Gosh, we're having so much fun. I'm not really sure what's going on. All right, we have a number of individuals that have been recommended for reappointment as forest fire wardens or deputy forest fire wardens. I read this list. It's quite extensive.
Yep.
We have Albert Bolich, Daniel Brenn, Breton, Jesse, um, Kevin Lahey, Michael Monday.
There you go.
Huh?
There you go.
Yes, I, I know that. They have a Y in the spelling.
With an R in the pronunciation.
Right.
Michael Monday, Chuck Reagan, Henry Stokes, Joseph.
He's not here.
He's gone.
That isn't all.
Scott Allen Thompson is about to know, Doug Vogt, and Ernst.
I move it. One second.
Okay.
Ben, aye.
Now, listen, you two.
Do you guys have hot dates or something waiting for you at home?
Yes, actually.
Okay, so...
So Ben and David, okay, and welcome. I'll vote for them as well. Okay.
And then you need to sign this cooperative agreement. Oh, I think, I, I don't know what that is. I haven't even got it.
Yeah.
It has to do with the generator that they have.
Oh, is that the one that got it at reduced price?
Oh, it's given, given to the town, that, that we're holding, carrying insurance on it, that we're doing all this stuff. It's a cooperative agreement that you guys have already signed.
Federal excess property agreement. Yeah, I thought we signed that when we got it.
You did.
I think this was, uh...
Yeah, I don't know. I haven't...
I'm not signing nothing.
No.
Okay.
And then the forest ranger will approve this. And actually, he's the one that approves Ernst as the forest fire warden after he reduced the stuff level.
Okay, so we have two abatements we are moving into. Gosh, we've done all the fun stuff. Thirty-one Stores Hill, Gandon, and three forty-six Ford Road, Green. I believe we have the thirty-one Stores Hill Lane, the assessed value of this property is one million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars. And the taxpayers filed for an abatement. They believe the value assessed is disproportionate to other properties in the area. Our recommended assessor is Grant.
Well, but...
It, he's completed an inspection of the property and made some changes on the listing data. The property had been adjusted for having two dwellings on it, when the understanding was that the second building would be converted to an agricultural building. The adjustment for the multiple dwellings on the land was removed. The dependents cite two properties to compare to theirs. However, they did not provide an appraisal to support their stated value. They stated that they think the value should be a million dollars. So revised assessment recommended by our assessor is one million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars, an assessment change of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. What do we wish to do with this?
I don't know what. One second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
And Judy, aye. Okay, so that's approved as recommended.
There's two green tabs to sign. The DRA says you have to sign the actual abatement form, not just us.
Okay. Okay.
And it's worth noting on this assessment that the taxpayer was asking for a reduction in value of about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and our assessor recommended an assessment change of sixty-seven thousand, so relatively modest compared to what the taxpayer was asking for.
Good, good. We figured that out. Thank you. Our next request for an abatement is for Catherine Green on three forty-six Ford Road. She has an assessed value of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. She did not give an opinion of what she thought the assessment should be. Uh, our assessor is recommending granting an abatement. He completed an inspection of the property and noted that several of the outbuildings should be changed to thirty percent good due to the condition they are in. So the revised assessment is three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars, which is an assessment change of twenty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. The taxpayer did not give a value of opinion. What do we wish to do with this one?
I'll move it. One second.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, David. All those in favor, say aye.
David, aye.
Ben, aye.
And Judy, aye. And now we have...
Dina, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Dina, do we have the, the CSA to sign too, now that we've moved it? Or have we already signed?
Judy's, you moved it, and Judy's gonna sign it.
Okay, Judy's gonna sign. That's right, okay, I'm sorry. Loser tribe.
That's all right.
Oh, the, um, maybe the town...
Yeah, it's not for you to just sign it.
Yep. So, um, next up, we have a report of wood cut. Thank you. Sven Japes, about twenty-nine Baker Hill Road, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and ten cents.
I'll move it. Second. Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. Um, wood cut. Two, 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 two. Eighty-two, ten. And that's approved. And then we've got two in tents to cut. One for George Toller and one for Richard Mengi. Ben usually takes a gander at those.
Yeah, they look fine.
Okay, I'll move them. Toller and Mengi.
One second.
Thank you.
Ben, aye. David, aye.
Judy, aye. Those are approved. Okay. We were going to have a barn easement inspector following this meeting, but that is being changed. Probably to the next meeting.
Yes.
So it's at point five Market Street for anyone that's interested. I'm not sure that all of the public would be welcome there, but the select board will go in, take a look and make sure it qualifies for a barn easement, and...
Those intent to wood cuts, um, we really don't have much to say about them, but it's important to get them signed because the contractors are needing to get going on them.
Yeah, time to review.
Yeah, well, we can, if we don't sign them, we're holding on. Comes down to that, but there's, there's...
Well, sometimes not.
Well, sometimes they'll go do what they want to do, but for the most part, they're championing it to fit together and selling it.
After fourteen days, they can just go in.
And if we deny one of them or something like it, we'd, we'd really have to have cost. And it's pretty hard to have cost without...
Doesn't sound like anybody's clear-cutting a major piece of forest.
Well, there's, there's a state... Well, there's, there's a state, uh, forest warden who oversees the cuts, that makes sure that best management practices are followed, and and so it's not like it's without oversight after that point.
Okay, good, thank you.
They show up on the job and they expect it to be...
Thank you. We have a, a recommendation from David Robbins, our planning and zoning administrator, for an appointment, the, the select board appoints members of the zoning board.
We'll do that one in non-public.
Okay. I believe that's a great idea. And then, I believe, we already, we're gonna hit up the demerger request next time after we have a chance to really get into it. But, Dina.
Hello, aye.
I am gonna be out of town on six thirty. So I wonder if we could move that meeting to the day before, which would be a Wednesday, six twenty-nine.
When is the next meeting?
The thirteenth.
June thirteenth.
The June thirteenth, then June twenty-seventh. So you're gone on the twenty-seventh, you said.
Dina is gonna hate me for this suggestion, but I'm gonna make it anyways. On, on most of the other boards where I sit, or someone is in charge of sending out calendar invitations. And those just automatically populate into your calendar, if you're using Apple Calendar, or Outlook, or any of the sort of modern software. I know that you don't use Outlook, so we'd have to get some sort of software for you to be able to do that. But that would be so helpful for you to just be able to send out an invitation and have it pop up in our calendars, as opposed to having to keep track of it and write it down every day.
Every day, yeah.
Yeah, but can't you guys do that in your own calendars? I mean, that's what I do.
Yeah, yeah, but there's a one...
Just go in and you go every other week, and you...
Yeah, sure, you can do that, but then they end up moving around and stuff changes whereas...
I could wait for this flood of stuff from Dina shows up and I go, "All right."
Got a meeting?
You know, but that usually is three days before the meeting.
Well, that's fine with me.
Well, yeah, you know, I have other stuff. I, I, I just think it'd be nice if there was a way for the, the select board assistant, uh, administrator to be able to send out invitations in advance, so that we wouldn't have to keep track of it ourselves. Basically pushing work off of my desk calling Dina.
Onto Dina's, because heaven only knows, she doesn't have enough to do.
I'll try to figure out how to do that.
I think Jordan is pretty good with computers, my family's a little...
I'll ask her, she can teach me how, but then that's one more thing that I have to remember to ask somebody else to do. And that's harder for me then, reminding to do it myself.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Sorry, Dina.
Now, you're having a cranky day.
Well, I am having a tad bit of a crank here, I was over it.
Where'd you, where'd they get those fish, that was a pretty nice stringer.
First Connecticut Lake.
Wow.
Yeah, it was great, we had a really good time this year, it was good fishing.
It was Santa Claus, I mean, what...
I don't know where my, so the twenty-seventh is a Thursday, I'm asking for...
I don't want to get a rise out of you, that's all.
I will, uh, I'll repeat that later. Ben, you wanted to update us on the cutting of the trees?
Why don't we do the meeting dates, since you brought it up?
Oh, okay, okay. So Thursday, June twenty-seventh, I'm out of town. So I'm suggesting Wednesday, June twenty-sixth.
That works for me.
Oh, good. Oh, great, thank you, and I apologize for that. Can you help?
Is Dina anything good?
Well, yeah, um...
She thinks so.
Yeah, my daughter and her husband are taking a little vacation with his mother. And I'm going up to babysit the puppy, the chicks, the turkey chicks, and the meat birds. Anyone is welcome to come along and help with the menagerie. So I will be taking my coffee maker with me, 'cause I'll be needing it. As I run around, let everybody out, and corral them at the end of the day. And her puppy apparently really likes the chicks, so there's a lot of watching to be done. And I do apologize for that, but... Yes.
Life happens.
Who knew that my grandchildren would be feathered?
At least they'll talk back to you. They're not fresh.
Not, not too often. Okay, we are looking for an update from Ben, um, on the cutting of trees.
All right, uh, there's a few things she wanted, and I, I, if you wanna know which, um, school board member would be the best to talk to, he's concerned about the renovation of the school and the removal of flood tanks and asbestos, and where they're gonna store them on site, and they're gonna clean a dumpster on her property line, I guess. So, so I give a suggestion to me, which, because I don't know anything about school board members, and I'll relay that to you. But on the cutting of trees, uh, she said she would work with them, but the last time they did it, Ashplum came and came on to her, not only cut all the trees, but came on to her property and cut trees on her property and really inflamed the situation. Then they paid them for the damages, like forty-eight dollars for the damage they did to the trees. But she would, um, work with them to cut the trees that are going into power.
Work with the electric company?
Of the electric company, yes. But she just wanted to make sure that it was clear what they wanted to cut. And I'll, I'll get back in touch with her and reconsider that.
Thank you very much for handling that, I think that had a better result than, uh, muscling in and doing it, and then really inflaming the situation.
But I, from what she explained, I mean, anybody would, would have been upset with what they did. It was a young crew, was what their excuse was, and they didn't, weren't aware of property lines and stuff like that. And they really, they came across the fence and were cutting stuff on, on her property, so...
And which I think they can do only if the branches are in the lines, but...
That's not what they did, they did more than that. And they did pay her forty-eight bucks for damages or something like that, but, um, that's why she would...
Adding insult to injury?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those guys at Ashplum sometimes are a little aggressive.
Well, they're there to cut trees.
Any tree cutters, people, a lot of people think they're aggressive.
You know, one of our, one of my direct neighbors gave them permission to cut some trees, and they came in and did that. And then, two days later, came out and they had these bags of, um, I don't know what you call it, the stuff that kills plants, that they were gonna spread out all over the ground, and she, they never asked permission to put, uh, you know, Agent Orange on the ground. She, she had to put it and, and chase them away, but I think sometimes they kind of do what they want, and figure it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission.
Yeah. Well, that's a good outcome, thank you, Ben.
I move we give Ben another.
Well, Dina got the real medal.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's true, you can...
Yes, I, I actually looked back at my notes, and, um, it looked like originally the power company was looking for something in the vicinity of eighty thousand dollar rebate off of their, or production off of their assessment, and then we would owe them from the taxes they paid. And we settled at mediation for twenty thousand. So, um...
She had one more thing. The tree, the linden tree, she was gonna have, wanted to have tested, she sent people back with that email. I didn't understand what the testing was, but they're just gonna pour it...
They don't really test, right, they go, yeah, but, um, I have to go and, I have to see what's left in that account.
Well, you'll, you'll respond to her with that.
She usually...
I didn't have a problem with what she described, it's a testing, I didn't, I didn't...
Oh, okay.
I didn't know what testing meant.
So it's just a core sample?
Then they decide what should be trimmed and what shouldn't.
Okay, so, um...
But I, I can talk with her easily on these kinds of calls, if you listen to it.
That would be very awesome, we've got, we appointed to that position.
We're done except for non-public.
I think we're non-public, yes, and so I will move that we go into non-public. Wow, screaming through this one.
Good.
We need a second for the non-public. Thank you, sir, thank you, David.
It's non-public.
We are going in under reputation, which I believe is a C. We thank you all.
Go ahead.
And...
Now, Rich, you keep bringing in those two cameras, it makes me worry.